To bring this meeting to order. Jeff, our esteemed counselor.
Would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Carol, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Mayor Cartwright?
Here.
Okay, at this time, the selection of mayor and mayor pro tem for the term December 23 through the seating of the new mayor at the beginning of the first regular meeting of December 24 will occur. We will need a motion for both appointments.
Carol, may this be one motion or two?
Can be a single motion.
All right, I move to appoint.
Twice?
Yeah.
The second time, you're going to appoint me into something?
Yes.
Okay, right on.
Okay. I lost my train of thought.
It's okay.
Oh, I boo Stephanie Youngblood as mayor and David Ring as mayor pro tem.
I second.
Thank you.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Carol, at this time, do we want to take the 10-minute recess?
Now, at this time, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute recess, get some photographs and enjoy some snacks, and then we'll come back here.
Okay, so then we will take a break.
Any other photograph of you, Mayor Cartwright?
Okay, all right, let's do this.
Can I get a group shot? That's good with everybody? And then I want with him. All right, out here, I guess. Oh, thank you, I officially have a beginning again. I lost my other one. All right, let's go out there. Do you want to move places first, or whatever you want to do? Then we can come back to you. Of course, yes.
How are you doing? Good to see you. How's your husband? Oh, is he?
Good to see you.
Come back a little smaller.
Whose was this?
It was mine.
Oh, okay.
You can't do that to Carol.
I didn't want to do it to her.
That's funny. All right, so, uh... So we're adoption of the agenda, correct?
Yes, we are on page two and top of the list. And yes, adoption of the agenda, you are correct.
Okay. Okay. Can I say something?
Mm-hmm, cheer.
At this time, we are going to bring the meeting back to order. We're going to get a motion to, actually, public comment for the adoption of the agenda, correct, Wes? Okay. At this time, we're going to have public comment for the adoption of the agenda. Do we have anybody in the public who would like to come up and speak?
Sorry to interrupt this festive occasion. I came to bring you some bad news.
Uh-oh.
And also some bad news. I'm Bob Rhodes, Loomis citizen. Every day now during the weekdays, there has been traffic backing up and coming to a full stop in this slow lane at Horseshoe Bar Road. This is occurring because there isn't sufficient capacity at the off-ramp at Rayleigh's for people to clear that intersection. It backs up over the bridge, which is just two lanes, goes down to the intersection at the off-ramp from eastbound. The bad news is the fix is controversial and it's expensive. But I think that in the slow, in the slow, slowing down of this, we should make, I think, anybody in the town, your friends, your family, aware that they should avoid this because this is going to be happening more and more as we get more traffic coming from, say, from Costco. And when this new fourth lane opens up between 65 and Rockland, the traffic will be coming up to Loomis quicker. And in the long term, I think the town needs to be looking at what remedies we have and that we should be aggressive in trying to meet those requirements. I have some ideas, but I'm not going to take your time tonight, so. Be safe.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh. Okay.
Just to be clear, this is not the public comment period for comments not on the agenda? This is for anyone who wants to comment on the agenda approval.
I want two items polled. Is this where I come up to say I want to?
Not.
I want item seven and item eight polled, please.
Okay. It's not even there yet. So this is, again, this is just adoption of the agenda, we will note that. So if there's any public comment, read that because we always give public comment in every aspect of the agenda. That's just basically what this is.
We do have somebody online.
Okay. Pam, you can go ahead and talk.
Hi there, I would also like to have items seven and eight polled. Thank you.
Okay, so at that time, I think we're going to close public comment if there's nobody else who has public comment about just adopting the agenda. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Was that David?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
Okay, so at this time, I believe we are up to a recognitions. So I just walk up there and, may I have past Mayor Cartwright go up with me?
Sure.
Okay. No, actually, I'm supposed to go that way, you're right. You go this way to me, I need to go that way. You guys can both go either way, it doesn't matter. Thank you, Amanda. So, since you have appointed me to the planning commission, is my pleasure to present with you this plaque in recognition of your time as a 2023 mayor of the town of Loomis. I know you want to walk away. Don't walk away, I still have a few things to say to you. First and foremost, Danny, you were the glue that kept us, all of us together. You have zero tolerance for drama, BS, and giving up, and anybody who knows him knows that is true. It is a great quality to have. You are a true team player, a patriot, and you were always there for me when I needed to vent, needed advice, and I needed a lot of advice, and especially when I needed a friend. Bringing this back, he did appoint me to the planning commission, he's the reason why I'm here today, so it is truly my honor to be holding on to this a little bit longer before I'm done talking. But we all know that you can moonlight as a stand-up comedian if you were able to figure out or juggle the 10 things already on your plate with that. In fact, I am going to ask Kim if he can continue that at the end of every meeting because we all get that enjoyment. It is my tremendous honor to present this plaque to you, Danny Cartwright, for being such a wonderful mayor. I wish you well as a council member, and I know you will excel in everything you take on. So this is your plaque as past mayor of the town of Loomis. Do you have any words you'd like to say?
Sure.
At this time?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's very nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is very nice. I'm just going to keep it short. The experience of being a council member and mayor is, it's one more thing that I can say has enriched my life, and I've done a lot of different jobs and been at a lot of different places around the world, and this is just one more. And it's something that after my time is over, I'll look back and with a feeling of fondness about it. So with that, I'd just like to thank everyone for those who voted for me and those who supported me, and look forward to being with you again, whether we're just running around town and we bump into each other at the store or the gas station, and that's about it. So thank you very much, and I just, I had no idea that being fired would be such a pleasurable experience. Thank you.
I'll let you go first. Um, so, at this time, we're going to go to matters of interest to council members? No? That's what it says. We do a public?
No, honestly, I don't have any.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Do you have any, Amanda? Do you have any? Jenny does.
Yeah, sorry, I'll be brief. I just wanted to take the time to thank all of our service organizations and nonprofits in our business and our community people for all that they've done these last few weeks during the holiday. We had the Day Before Thanksgiving Day Parade by Shine With Purpose, and we had the Friends of Library Craft Fair, raising funds for the library, and the Christmas tree, Loomis Family Christmas tree by the American Legion Post 775, which also had the Lions Club and Sir Optimus, and the Chamber Commerce Mixer, co-hosted with Sir Optimus, and South Placer Heritage raised almost $1,200 for the Loomis Christmas Basket Program, which gives out over 300 baskets of food and toys this last weekend. You know, the Education Foundation hosted a holiday home tour to raise funds for our school. Without everybody, I just, I just really feel like this time I need, I would like to say, I don't, I don't normally say a whole lot, but I really want to thank everybody. And lastly, well, two things. I would like to thank this council because I know you're all a part of these things, and so I appreciate your time in serving, and thank you, Danny, for serving as mayor, and I'm welcoming you, and I'm excited for everybody to do their part. Lastly, I just want to invite anybody that wants to come to the Loomis Senior Life Center on Thursday, December 21st, for our holiday lunch celebration, that have been serving this community for 45 years. And we actually have one member who's going to be 100 years old. So if anybody would like to come and join us, we would just love to welcome you there. And that's just all I had to say. The program will start around 10:00 and the lunch is at noon. Yeah. That's all I really had to say. Oh, December 21st to Thursday.
All right, so with that, I think we're going to move to the town manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a couple items I want to highlight out of the report for the council and the audience, the rest of it can be read at your leisure. So we, we've initiated for the Horseshoe Bar Road and IAD interchange potential project staff in collaboration with Caltrans District 3, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and the council appointed members to the PCTPA representatives, and the Turtle Island Development have initiated early discussions regarding the potential of developing the first of two intersection treatments at the Horseshoe Bar Road and IAD interchange. The town will need to enter into a cooperative agreement with Caltrans District 3 and initiate a project study report with a third-party transportation engineering consulting firm, determine the best treatment or location. Staff anticipates the item will be brought to council, and the report is in January, probably more like February for we'll be able to get that process. And the visual aid that you see down here is actually a feasibility study that was done for looking at a roundabout concepts on here and stuff. There's, there are monies and funding pots, we think, with Caltrans, $1.25 million for shop monies we can get. The developer would need to put in monies for the treatment. And then we also have a maintenance district in that area that was started by Rayleigh's that would contribute to the overall cost of the project. Next item I want to highlight is community branding. The Economic Development Committee is working with Solus Graphics to refine the town Loomis community branding. We initially did kind of a draft brand that was meant for apparel, and I think through the community, the Economic Development Committee, we want to revise that a little bit and then bring it back to council to adopt. I mean, this is like, when you look at it as an identity for the community, if you look at like Apple, when you see that Apple symbol, it draws a certain sense, and that's what we're hoping to get, and not to take away from the seal of the town, but to kind of improve on it. And the last item is, I've mentioned it every meeting, the solid waste joint powers authority. So I was reminded that not everybody knows what solid waste is, it's the garbage service that you have. Staff with the attorneys from Auburn, Colfax, and Loomis have met five times and talked about forming the JPA. The JPA would help with compliance with Cal Recycles regulations, administer in a franchise agreement for the hauler because two of the three jurisdictions contracts are up with recolages, so we want to make sure we get the best service possible. So the discussion will be brought to the council for consideration to move to the next steps of the JPA in the February council meeting. Again, in this, my report, I said January, but it, since the report, it got changed to February on there for discussion. So in February, we'll go to all three councils for discussion. And the last item that I want to highlight again is the holiday closures for Town Hall. Town Hall will be closed December 25th through January 1st, opening back up on January 2nd. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. At this time, we're going to do the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report.
Good evening, everyone. So we're heading quickly towards the end of the year, but we do still have a few things to, that are happening at the library in the next week and a half or so. Starting with Japanese Storytime will be tomorrow and the following Wednesday at 10:30. And then, of course, our regular storytime in English on Fridays, both this upcoming Friday and the following Friday at 10:30. This Saturday at 10:30, we will have our Lego Club. I believe they're going to do balloon cars, but I could be wrong about that. We had to check and see how many Lego wheels we had before we decided that was going to be it. And then Spice Club will be this upcoming Tuesday, a week from today, at 6 o'clock, and their spice is going to be cinnamon, so perfect for this time of year. Also on Tuesday, we will be opening at 2:00 instead of 1:00, so that staff may attend a luncheon with the town. And then on, from December 23rd, which is the Saturday before Christmas, all the way through January 1st, we will be closed for the holidays. And then we will return to our regular hours and regular programming on January 2nd. And then just looking forward into the new year, a couple things that are going to happen before the next council meeting on January 2nd, that Tuesday, we will have another tee of the month, so you can come in and pick that up anytime after we reopen, as long as it's, we still have some because they do move fast, people really like our tees. And then on January 6th, we will be doing a puzzle swap, so perfect for the cold, you know, season, time of year, you can bring a puzzle, take a puzzle, and we'll also have some puzzles that you can do if you just want to sit and hang out and do a puzzle on a Saturday afternoon. and do a puzzle on a Saturday afternoon. So that's going to be from 2 to 4 on January 6th. I can answer. Any questions if you have any? Thank you.
Thank you so much. So at this time, maybe we will have a chamber of commerce update?
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, yes.
The chamber manager contacted me earlier today and she would not be available, so.
Do we have, is Ashley here? No. Are we going to do a partner agency update?
Hello, everyone. My name's Brian Mittyland. I'm one of our battalion chiefs at South Placer Fire. Pleasure meeting all of you. Chief Duer supplied me with a couple updates. And he graciously helped by providing pictures, which I like, to decide, to give you an explanation of what we have going on in our department. So as you can see, it's important that, you know, we mentioned a little bit about our call volume. And in our map here, special term we call the heat map, but it basically just tells us where our calls, primary calls are located. So this is specific to your jurisdiction. And this is, seems to be month to month, it's kind of more or less about the same. Overall, in our department, 302 calls total. And I think there's the, that's specifically for Station 18. 85 calls total with 61 of those EMS, two fire calls, and 22 other calls. And the other category can be anything from public assist to false alarms, things of that nature. So we follow those fairly close. The fires, I couldn't expand on the extent of those fires, but off the top of my head, nothing that's too major, that was extremely noteworthy or a large loss as well. So in our response times to the right-hand side, we follow those. Chief Duer follows those very closely. We all get reports of those, and we report those out to our personnel just to make sure that we're responding to your location in a timely manner. And on the last, or second to last slide, overall in our whole department, 302 calls total. And you can see the breakdown between all the other stations. So Station 18 is the busiest station that we have in our district. And the personnel there are very proud of that as well. So then on the last slide, for an update for our department. So I attended personally, we had active shooter training at the Galleria Mall with some of our partner agencies and plus other Placer County law enforcement agencies, such as the Sheriff's Department, and Roseville Police Department, Roseville Fire, so on and so forth, for that unfortunate event. Luckily for us, it was a great training, and the mall opened at 10 o'clock, and no one knew the wiser. So that was the plan. Santa Claus is coming to town. As you're, I'm sure, well aware with the help of South Placer Fire, you can check the district webpage or social media for dates and times, as well as you, obviously, I'm sure, are aware of that on December 23rd. And then I'm partial, because it's my fire station, is we do have a pancake breakfast. It is on the heels of your iconic pancake breakfast here. So it, you guys, thanks for setting the standard on that. We're always, I'm saying we're a little competitive, but we are. So, you know, if you could come by, that would be great. I'll leave some flyers over there. It's coming up this Saturday. It's community pancake breakfast as well. Lastly, December tips, water your Christmas trees as well. Make sure that your fireplace chimneys have been cleaned. And ensure that your ashes get stored in approved containers and not just dumped outside, and definitely not put in those garbage cans. And lastly, make sure you get or update your burn permit, as they are good for a year, but we can access those for the ease of our district website. Thank you.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Hello.
I'll let him give me the thumbs up. Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight? Hello, everybody out there. Deputy ability with Placer County Sheriff's Office. Nice to see everybody. I'm sorry that I wasn't here last, the last meeting. I was away at a advanced collision investigation class that was held during the same week. So I apologize for not being able to attend. Sergeant Dave Smith is, was supposed to attend. He's out sick tonight. So I have Lieutenant Tindall in the back, back there for my backup. So good to see everybody. Just updates. I do not have this, or the month of November stats, but I do have the kind of year and end stats for everyone, if you'd like me to read those. Other than that, I have just some quick topics to go over while I'm up here. So while I was out, was attending that class, also participated in Shop with a Cop, which was a multi-agency regional thing that we do every year, where we locate children through our schools, our school resource officers, and partner up with CHP, Roseville, Lincoln, Rockland, all the agencies in the region. And we all meet, and we have $250 per kid. And there's a couple hundred, not a couple hundred, I don't know the exact amount, but a good amount of children that we partner up with each officer. And we have target to ourselves, and it's like, we get to go shopping with the kids. So it's a lot of fun. It's a good program. It's my second year partaking in that, and puts a lot of real happy smiles on the kids' faces. So that was a big success. The Thanksgiving Parade was also a huge success for us. It was safe. It was my first time partaking in that also, so that was a lot of fun. So also, one of my kind of community outreach projects is the collision investigation class for 7th and 8th graders. I started this program last year with a handful of schools. And it was something that was really successful with 7th, 8th graders, teaching them the relevancy with math and real-world jobs, and using tangible math to solve a problem. So we stage a collision for them, and they're able to use mathematical equations to get a speed of the vehicle, which in turn helps us solve the collision. So using that, positive interactions with kids and the community and the schools. So really successful program so far. I've done four or five schools, so H. Clark Powers was one of them that we did it at recently. And just recently at Newcastle Junior High. So local schools, so yeah, definitely a positive thing. Dave actually asked me to cover some fentanyl-related topics. So we do three outreach programs for fentanyl education for kids. So we do the Every 15 Minutes, which we go to the high schools, and part of that is fentanyl education for them. We also do the Right Choice Program, which is for 7th and 8th graders. And then we do the One Pill Can Kill campaign. All three of those things are successful and much needed, and the schools love when we come to the schools and teach the stuff. We've, we have two detectives that are specifically covering fentanyl-related cases. The SROs are trained, specially trained for fentanyl education, and regularly do classes in the schools, teaching the dangers of fentanyl. And lo and behold, you know, Placer County being a great county that it is, we've had two successful murder prosecutions for sales of fentanyl. And then finally, even more good news, today we made a warrant arrest on a fentanyl sales case just here in town of Loomis. We made an arrest today on someone that had a warrant for that. So I think that covers everything. Just remember, it's the winter season, so drive safely if you're heading up the hill. Make sure you check for any chain control. Nothing's worth getting stuck on the highway. I did have stats. I don't know if Dave read them to you last month for, move all the way, for October, because those are the ones I have. I do not have Novembers. They haven't been completed yet. But I do have the, basically the year end, so it'd be January through October stats, if you'd like to hear those. Yeah, sure, okay. So for those 10 months, we had 2,500 roughly incidents take place in Loomis, almost 300 reports taken, transient-related activities was 57, suspicious activities, 87 calls for service, disturbance calls, 128, alarm calls, 180, and traffic stops, almost 500. So then we'll go across the bottom for disposition, incident dispositions. So we've had 39 arrests through the year. Assisted other agencies was 119, citations, 150. And then contacts with no crime, I don't have a number for that one. It's, looks like maybe there's some type of error there, because it's way off the chart. False alarms was 111. And then the pies at the top, center of there, those are just the citizens versus deputy initiated activity. So obviously, the citizens' calls outweigh that by 60 to 40%. So and then the final pie is just the priority level of calls. So where we get the most priorities in the township of Loomis. I think that covers everything. It was a lot. I kind of rushed through that. But if you do have any questions, please fire away. It's good to be back in town.
Wonderful. Good you're back, yeah.
Yep. Any questions?
Excellent job.
Okay, great. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. You too. So now, we are at the point where we can do public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the public? Love you. Come on forward, Ann.
Ann Baker, 8025 Quinplace in Loomis. First of all, thank you guys for your service to the town of Loomis. It's so important. But I came today to share with you that we're forming a committee to support a November 2024 ballot measure for the continuation of the quarter cent sales tax passed in 2016 by Loomis voters to fund our municipal Loomis Library and Community Learning Center. First of all, we are grateful you guys did this polling this summer to get the residents' opinions on town services, including the library. It's very good to understand the values of the town. With 70% of the respondents saying the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center is doing an excellent or good job, and 80% of the respondents agreeing it is an important resource for the community, we feel now is the time to prepare to ensure the library will always remain funded to provide a full-service library for the community. And now, as we are tightening our belts with this economy, the library's free resources and services will be needed. Sarah shared with me that a library patron saves an average of $250 a year, and that's just the beginning point, so. But I think you talk to people around town, it's just kind of become the heart and hub of Loomis. The library Learning Center is really doing well. As we move forward, our committee plans to keep you guys apprised of our efforts through these public comment opportunities. I would love to schedule a meeting with each of you individually to dialogue and talk about, and hear your thoughts. And the committee really wants to work to support you and work together with you to hopefully get this ballot measure placed on the November 24 ballot. Several community members have expressed interest in helping us with this campaign, but we want to make sure everyone's included. We're just getting organized. I don't have anything official to give official contact. But if there is maybe else that are interested, they could email me. I'm at ann.riley.baker@gmail.com. We, and it's I before E for Riley, R-I-E-L-O-Y, unusual. Anyway, I want to just thank you for the time tonight. And I do hope that you guys will consider supporting placing the measure on the ballot in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dally, you can come forward.
Good evening, council. Dave Dally, 3815 Delmar Avenue. At the last town council meeting, there was an item for the engineering company that's working on the road over here on Sierra College. You guys were misinformed on the whole story of where that money is going. After speaking to Merrill a couple of times, he even called me this afternoon to kind of like smooth things over, but he kind of made it worse. The design company that you went into contract with failed to do their job correctly. And then when the engineering company showed up to do all of their work, there were pipes in the way that they weren't able to do their work. So instead of going to the design company and make them eat the cost of the extra design, Merrill came to the town council and gave them another $145,000 for a problem that wasn't ours. That money should have came out of the design company, because they failed to do their job. You could call 1-800-DIG for free, and they'll come out and tell you where all the pipes are. That money needs to be rescinded, because it's not our problem. If somebody doesn't do their job, we are not paying for them to get let off free. I know the engineering company didn't have nothing to do with it. I just found out about the design company today when Merrill called me. The design company needs to be held liable for any cost that is due to them not doing their job. And the engineering company now has a problem because there's big sewer pipes and water pipes inside the marshland. I know Merrill's going to say it wasn't unforeseen. It's not unforeseen. We have companies that'll tell you where the pipes are for free. They chose to be lazy and not do their job and still charge us for the services that they rendered. I am asking the town council to resend that money to the coastline and to have coastline go after the designer, because it's not our fault that they didn't get the right information, just like it's not my fault that you were all misled at the last town council meeting, because there was more to it than what was going on. I know before the town council meetings, everyone meets with West. West had to have met with Merrill. So either Merrill lied to West or didn't give him all the correct information, and now we're in for 145 grand? No, that money needs to be rescinded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to come forward for public comment? Oh, yes. Yeah.
So with all due respect, I called Dave today because we have a difference of opinion. He's questioning my integrity. He's saying that I'm lying to the council. This is not true, obviously. The $145,000 was the amount of the contract amendment that we approved with Coastline? Of that, there were, in the staff report, various pieces. Some of that was inspecting Costco, $35,000. Rule 28 inspections was $29,000. There was environmental compliance issues that had to do with the wetlands areas, that's $31,000. And then there were unforeseen conditions, like he said, of which the sewer and water conflict was one of them, and that was another $50,000. Without getting too much into detail, the design was done with record drawings that showed the water and the sewer lines. Those were well into marshland, basically. It was the extension of the covert on the west side of Sierra College Boulevard. And there's no way that you can pothole those. And so the decision is made to, you put them on the drawings. You make an assumption as to where they are and their alignment. And when you get into construction, the contractor potholes them as the first item of work. And it turned out that the sewer was actually two, two and a half feet higher than what we had thought it was in the drawings. And that created a conflict with our storm drain. But again, this is unforeseen. This is construction. You make your best guess as to where things are. You put them on the drawings. The contractor. You put them on the drawings, the contractor bids the work, and then when you're in construction, you have to modify as need be. So again, I understand Dave's frustrated, he thinks that something's going on here. If, if, if it was an error or omission, then we would be going after the design engineer. But, but this isn't something where potholing was in their scope of work. They just captured the existing drawings that we got from the sewer and the water district. And that's where it is, so. And Dave, if you want, I can continue to share with you information, and we can talk further. But I just, I see it differently.
Um, thank you. Oh, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda? If, I mean, out here first before we go to Zoom. Anybody else? Okay, let's go to Zoom.
Hi, Pam Blake. I believe earlier this year at one of our meetings, it was, the splash pad was brought up, how there was a water leak. And I don't know if it was West or Merrill, but it, it was brought up that it would be $100,000 to fix the water leak at the spray pad. So the consensus was made that the town would just pay more money water bill-wise each month, which I think that is wrong. But I also look at, well, $100,000 is a lot of money, you know, to fix it. So I just wanted to make that comment because you have something coming up later tonight regarding the shade structures. And one more thing was, you guys all approved the agenda for tonight's meeting. However, you didn't say, we'll approve the agenda minus seven and eight. So that was left out because Dave wanted to speak on that, and also I want to speak on seven and eight. So I just wanted to bring up that we're just spending money, you know, left and right, and we need to just tighten, tighten our belt. Thank you.
Pam, the items that were being pulled, that is going to come up on the consent, the approval of the consent agenda. That's different than the adoption of the main agenda. So that point will come up when the time is correct. Thank you.
Okay, alrighty, thank you.
Carol, is there anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so with that being said, we have the opportunity to comment on items on the consent calendar. This is the opportunity where you can come forward and you can pull items with public. I know that you pull, yeah. It's okay. Yeah, just pulling.
Okay, aren't you guys concerned about how many engine?
Oh, Dave, it was just items that we're pulling.
Yeah, item seven and eight.
Yeah, so we're not discussing it yet, we're just, yeah. So we're pulling items seven and eight, correct, per his previous?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and then you ask the audience or other council if they wish to pull other items from the consent calendar, and if not, then we'd be looking for a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
So if nobody in the public has any items they'd like to pull, is there anybody on the council that would like to pull any items? And again, I'm going to say one more time, in case there's anybody in the audience, does anybody want to pull any items off the consent agenda before we approve it? Okay? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as, with items seven and eight, correct?
Madam Mayor, I might be mistaken, but I believe I heard Mr. Dally wanting to pull item six and seven, and then Pam wanting to pull seven and eight. And so I just want to clarify that first before we move. Your seven and eight?
Oh, no, no, six, okay.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay. Somebody said six, right?
Well, my, my hearing is not the best.
Okay, seven and eight, thank you.
So I, I moved to approve the consent calendar with, correction. I moved to pull item seven and eight and then approve the one through five and nine.
No.
Through, correction, one through six, and that's it.
That's it.
Yep, that's it, because that's public hearing.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have a second?
All right, okay.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mary Youngblood?
Aye.
Okay.
Dave.
Dave, go ahead. Line up, Dave.
Before he starts, I'd suggest you do them, item seven first.
Okay.
And then?
So we'll do item seven first and then item eight.
No, they're both more or less combined as far as, but I'll do seven first. I was wondering if the town council is concerned on, on all these engineering companies we have working for us? We must have five engineering companies that we're subcontracting. You know, we're a town of 6,000 people, and all I see is $200,000 for this guy on the, the Unico gets 200,000, we have Coastline doing the engineering, and then we have Wood Rogers doing the engineering services now. How many engineering services do we need? With all the money that you're spending on these engineering services for a couple of months, we could hire an engineer. What is the problem with hiring somebody if there's this much work? If there's this much work, why can't we hire an engineer? We have an engineer. I don't understand why we have so many engineering companies working for Loomis. We don't have that many projects that warrant over half a million dollars in engineering services. It's just ludicrous. And I wish the town council would start asking questions when these items show up for $200,000. And with Wood Rogers, there isn't even a price on Wood Rogers' thing. So it's an open account? This is a waste of money. If we have an engineer, he should be taking care of some of this work. And if Merrill needs help, and I know Merrill needs help, we should hire another engineer. It's not fair to the town that we're throwing money away for services, for services that we could use here, but we're not going to use for another six months? It is a waste of money. I've been in construction for over 40 years, so I know how it works. This is a waste of money. We don't have this kind of money to spend on engineering companies just so they could have a paycheck. Your responsibility is for the town of Loomis. You're supposed to be stewards of the town of Loomis and watch every dime that we have. And I don't see it happening. And Merrill, I beg to differ. These, the design company, they could have called 1-800-DIG, and they would have told them where those pipes were for free. Even PG&E will come out and do it for free. So you're wrong. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Okay, let's go to Pam for seven.
Hi there. I'm on my laptop, so I don't have the other information in front of me. But it's, this is basically a combo of seven and eight. One of them is being amended for the sixth time. I don't know the other one, how much it's been, how many times that that contract has been amended. But when you add up seven and eight, it comes to $1,368,030.30. And so I don't need to get back up and talk on number eight. I just wanted to throw out this number, $1,368,030, that both of these contracts are now going to be, you know, costing us. And I know everybody on the town council, you, you get the, the full packet to review before the meeting. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, with everybody having regular jobs, whether you really go through the thick packet before these town council meetings? Because what is online that I read is very limited to me, but I'm assuming that you guys get the, the whole big packet, you know, with everything, and whether you actually have the time to go page by page. And I'm just seeing both of these contracts with amendment after amendment after amendment costing us beaucoup dollars. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so these on-call contracts.
There was only two.
Just the two, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so these are on-call contracts, and these are actually really good examples of how you leverage your time with, with using consultant help. These contracts were arrived at from an RFP that was done back in 2018, and it went to council December of 2018, so they've been around for five years. And it's somewhat my bad that I haven't gone through an RFQ process to solicit new proposals and kind of shuffle the deck, if you will, and give other consulting firms a chance to compete for this work. And I will. It's just we've been so busy, and a lot of the staff that, that we utilize as consultants is really good at what they do. And so there's a rapport and an institutional knowledge and expertise that's, that's kind of hard to let go. But I have committed to issue that RFQ request for qualifications, and we'll go through the process of opening it up and allow other firms to then submit proposals. We'll have the review periods, interviews, and ultimately, early next year, we'll be bringing new contracts back to the council for this work. So that's, that's on me, letting these things go for a five-year term. And that's why the numbers are as big as they are, is because, you know, you divide a million dollars into five years, and you're at 200,000 over two different firms. And each of these firms, like Unico, we have Connie Nelson does our grading inspections. We have John Benedict, who does our encroachment permit and small capital projects inspections. He's doing the Costco inspections, the Rule 28 inspections. Brian Ming is our town surveyor, so he does all of our map reviews for technical accuracy. These are all things that I really can't do. And all of these staff are part-time roles, that if you tried to take on a staff person to do them as a full-time capacity, it just, it's a lot more efficient to break this up into smaller pieces with staff that can provide their, their expertise niche. And it's, it's a pay-as-you-go approach. It's an on-call contract based on hours spent. That's the Unico one. And then the, the one for Wood Rogers, they do design work in addition to providing our traffic engineering support. The traffic engineering is an on-call, and the design work, they did the downtown master plan, they did the Sierra College widening. But, but again, both of these are for an extended term, and we'll bring back new contracts next year.
Sounds good. So with that being said, we can move on to the public hearing, correct? Or do we have to? Or you have a couple of questions?
Well, and also you'll need?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. All right, so you have your questions, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to make, so first of all, to Pam, the online information as far as, I mean, I, that's, that's the same as what we get, because that's how I start, that's where I start looking at all my information too. So the information, the packet online is the same as what, what we have in front of us right now. And I did want to make sure that I reiterated what Merrill said, was that that 1.3 million is over the, it's over a long time. It's not over this year. If it was just this year, I would have a problem with it. But if it's over five years, then it's a lot of engineering that we've had, we've needed. So it's not, it's not great, but it's all necessary. I mean, if it wasn't needed, we wouldn't do it. And so that's, and we have a lot more, am I correct in that we have a lot more engineering now because of the Costco project? I mean, there's a lot more involved because of that, or is this just?
A piece of it. Like I said, John Benedict does our encroachment permit inspections. Costco's actually working under an encroachment permit, and so, yeah. And two more points. One is the fees with Unico, most of that's all reimbursable. So the developers will pay for grading permits. Costco paid for the encroachment permits. They put down a time materials inspection deposit that they're charging against. And so I'd say probably 80% of, of the costs that we pay to Unico are pass-through costs that we recover. And then the other thing is that, that we adopted a CIP two years ago, year and a half ago, that approved eight and a half million dollars worth of work. I mean, it's, it's 20 to 30 projects, eight and a half million dollars worth of work. And to deliver that much work takes help. And so Dave's right, we have a lot of consultants that we're relying upon. I even have project management consultants that I'm using beyond these, that, that are helping to deliver this eight and a half million dollars worth of capital work. And so, you know, one option would be to just not deliver as many projects. But, but a lot of the, the funding is there, and the decision was made to approve the budgets, and so we're, we're trying our best to, to deliver those projects. And even pedal to the metal, I'm not going to be able to deliver all of them, and so you prioritize what you can get done, so.
And that CIP isn't over this year?
No, it's, yeah. And we'll, and we'll be back early next year with, with the next two-year CIP, and we'll have all new projects and things to talk about. And we have the ability, again, to prioritize and look at what level of delivery you want and what that cost to do.
And then, so to Mr. Dally's point with the calling people to have them, the companies come out and mark where the pipes are? They, would they, if they, would they come out and actually do the potholing? Or did they just come out and look at the map where it is and spray? Because it seems like they would just come out and?
No, there's a service. It's, it's called USA Underground Service Alert. 811 is the number you can call, and he's right, it's, it's that simple. You call the number and they come out. But what they do is they use paint, and you can see it on the ground. It's different colors, and the colors represent, blue is water, green is sewer. You'll see it if you look close enough on your streets. But what they do is they paint out the alignment. But they don't, they don't dig, and they don't give you depths. All they do is they tell you that, that somewhere in this alignment is a water line, and somewhere in this alignment is a sewer line. And we knew that, we had the record drawings, and that was on the plans.
So even if we had called it, it wouldn't have mattered?
No.
They don't tell us the depth?
Right. It's up to either the agency to hire someone to pothole it, or oftentimes, you just defer that to the construction phase, and then you make that a first item of work for the contractor to confirm that the depths are, are out of your way. And if they're not, then you deal with it that way, so.
And then the last thing is, you're saying we're going out for new contracts in the spring?
I will commit, I will commit to, I will, I'll commit to getting the RFQ out this month. And then they'll be, they'll be due the end of January, and we'll have contracts probably by March.
So those are not replacing these, those are in addition to, right?
No, no, we'll end these.
Oh, so these are, so those, so if, if?
If, if they end, then this money, yeah, like Unico, I put 200, that gives us a whole nother year. But if we have new contracts in place, and let's say we select Unico, we could retire this contract and then issue a, a new contract.
Okay, so then, and, and you also said that, if I'm hearing you right, 80% of what we're actually spending is coming back to us?
It is reimbursed, right. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So then it's, we're not really, the town isn't really, in the long run, spending the 200,000?
No, in fact, even a lot of the design work comes out of the approved capital budget. So, so, you know, it's not coming out of operating budget or general fund budget. That, that, that's part of the project cost that we approve.
Thank you.
Stephanie? I just, I just want to say that I think, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the council, but I feel like our staff is right there for us to answer questions. And when, even today, I asked the question of Wes before this meeting. And so sometimes, we review the whole packet, read the whole packet, and get answers. And I appreciate everyone out there that comes up and asks and makes comments, but we do look at our packets and, and read them and ask questions, and we have a great response from our staff, so thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, most of us, I'm probably sure, probably all of us, we have weekly meetings with our staff behind closed doors, and maybe we should do a better job on asking those questions in front of you. But we do, we have weekly meetings with Wes, and we go through the packet, and he gives us the items that, and then the rundown of why we're doing what we're doing. And then we ask our questions there, and then, so we are asking questions, we are meeting with them, and they are providing the answers. So David, I think you brought up some really good line of questioning that maybe clarified some things for our, our residents.
Danny, do you have anything?
I'm done.
Okay, me too.
[inaudible].
So, um...
Good, Jenny.
Jenny, did you have anything?
I'll make a motion to...
Thank you.
On seven, because we told Mr. Dally that we were doing seven first.
So you're going to come back and do eight now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I told you for number eight.
Okay. Hey, Dave, can you come back up for number eight?
However you want to do it.
So should we just approve them both after he goes through both?
That's fine.
Okay. Are you, are you fine with that, mentioning eight, and then we'll...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On number eight, there's no amount, uh, I'm going to say it again, we don't need all these engineering services. We have, we already have an engineering service that's on-call, a Coastline, if I'm not mistaken. If they're on-contract, they're on-contract to do anything that the town needs. Go here, go here, go here. Now, sort of being under-contract is, if you're in construction, like Danny knows, if you're under-contract, you do whatever the town or the person that you're working for needs done. There's no need to hire all these, there's no need to hire all these engineering companies. It's just ludicrous that we have so much money going out, and I didn't know it was $1 million for five years. That's a, that's hiring somebody in our town hall for five years with that million dollars. That's what we should be looking at, trying to make our town structure better instead of relying on outside services, because we are better than that. And the people of Loomis deserve to know where all this money is going. It's just unbelievable that you guys could sit there and approve all of this stuff, and when it comes to the thing with the last town council meeting, you weren't told the whole story. And Merrill, you were wrong, because the design company should have spent the money to find out where those pipes were before they designed the area that they're working in. So when Coastline showed up to do their job, they knew where everything was. They went there and dug, and they hit the pipes, because the design company failed to do their job. And Merrill was failing to hold them responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Pam, do you have a comment on, uh, item eight?
Uh, I just wanted to thank Amanda for her explanation on the weekly meetings with, uh, Wes, and for David and Jenny's comments, so, uh, th- thank you so much for clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody, um, up here have any comments on item eight?
Just one quick...
When Dave was talking about there isn't a number, and it's the 75,000, so there is a number that, that's listed on there for the Wood Rogers. And you're talking about, when you're talking about going up for new contracts in the spring, you're talking about pretty much all engineering, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, and then one last question, one last comment is that we had talked, and you were saying that there is a little bit of restructuring that's going to be happening with the sort-of-ish, maybe with the town and the engineering, I mean, we're with, because you're saying that with, with, we're looking at a new public works, not new, new public works, but like shifting of responsibilities?
So we're, we're trying to get to a point where, um, the proposed next year, hopefully if council supports it, is that we change the, the structure of the public works, where we have an operations manager there full-time and a public works director that can take some of the, the, the higher-level burdens off of Merrill, who's been doing a lot of the contracts that wouldn't traditionally be done by the, the public works director in there, like striping contracts and those things. And some of that's going to be, you know, kind of nurturing Dave Struck to kind of get up to that level and those types of things, giving him the opportunity. So that way we can, um, share the, the opportunity in public works to get things accomplished on time. And we also are creating that, you know, that multi-level in case somebody's out, there's somebody that can step into that role, getting that situation where we learned on the finance side where we're still scrambling to try and get that whole fixed.
So we are, we are sort of in the process of trying to not next, not, not fix the engineering department, but expand it, make it a little better so that we aren't having to go up to all these contracts, is that...
Uh, no, it's, so just keep in mind the engineering side of things, the design of projects and those types of things, that's still going to be completely, I need the town engineer. I'm talking about more of the, the maintenance-related activities.
But he'll have, the, the town engineer will have more time if we do that, though, right?
Yes, he'll, he'll actually be able to look up more than once a day if we ask for him on there.
All right, well, thank you. That's it.
Anybody else on item eight? Okay, so do we have a motion? Uh, Jenny, you were going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve items seven and eight on the consent agenda.
The second.
That was Amanda on the second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing, correct? Yes, I did one thing right. So, it's the syringe service programs?
Correct.
You, okay.
That'll be me. So, good evening, everyone. Um, as you recall, on October 10th of this year, the town council permanently adopted Chapter 5.24 regarding the needle exchange and distribution program ban through ordinance 294. Um, Chapter 5.24 identifies syringe exchange programs as a public nuisance, defy, uh, defines syringe services programs, and prohibits such programs from being created, established, conducted, or operated in the town. Uh, so in conformance with the adoption of ordinance 294, the planning department was tasked with incorporating the ban on syringe exchange programs into the town zoning ordinance. Uh, staff prepared recommendations to include a new chapter within Title 13, which is the zoning ordinance, um, as well as amendments to each table of allowed uses in Section 13.24.40, which addresses residential zones, uh, Section 13.26.40, which addresses commercial zones, and Section 13.28.30, which addresses industrial zones. Uh, in addition, a zoning glossary reference was recommended, which refers to pro, refers to Chapter 5.24 and the previously adopted definition of syringe service, services programs. Um, on, on October 24th of this year, staff presented these zoning ordinance modifications to the planning commission, and through Resolution 2304, the planning commission recommended the Giraffe Syringe Service Programs Ordinance, um, Chapter 13.48, and the amendments to the glossary and list of allowable uses in the residential, commercial, and industrial zones to the town council for adoption. So as you'll see in, in Attachment A of the staff report, Chapter 13.48 includes a section disclosing the purpose statement, a definition referencing Section 5.24.10.B, uh, which is the, the definition that was previously adopted, a section regarding prohibition of syringe service program activities, a section on conformance to law, and a section where violations are declared a public nuisance. Um, I'd like to suggest a modification to this last, um, section, specifically Section You'll see this in yellow highlight, um, in the packet that's in front of you. Um, there was a modified, modified version of that, um, of the staff report. And if anyone in the audience would like a copy, there are copies in the back of the room. Um, I recommend that the second sec, second sentence under 13.48.50.A is struck or deleted. Uh, this sentence was included in error as it references activity unrelated to syringe services. So my recommendation would be to adopt this version marked as recommended modification with that second sentence removed. Um, you'll also see in this packet that, um, all-new text is double-underlined rather than sometimes single-underlined, um, in the packet that went out. And that should help you identify the changes easier. Uh, for the proposed amendments, uh, to the tables of allowed uses in Section 13.24.40, 13.26.40, and 13.28.30, a row has been added to those tables listing syringe services programs as land use, but it shows that this is a use that would not be allowed in any of the zones, and it references Chapter 13.48. Uh, the amendment to the glossary includes a listing for syringe service programs per the meaning set forth in Section 5.24.10B, uh, previously adopted by the town council on October 10th. So no other modifications to the zoning ordinance are proposed for your consideration. Uh, tonight's reading of the ordinance is the first reading of the ordinance, and the second reading would occur at the January 9th, uh, meeting, the next town council meeting. So with that, I turn it back to the council.
Do you guys have any comments before I send it to the public comment? Okay. Or is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the presentation? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Um, you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
So, I, the, the syringe service program of land use thing that went out is related to the ordinance that passed recently. I was wondering if we had any updates, and we've kind of talked about, um, possibly relaying it so that it doesn't...
Right. I'd committed to take a, I'd committed to take a look at it to make sure that we could, to see whether there were changes that could be made that would keep it consistent with the intent. I have not had a chance to do that yet.
Okay.
Uh, but I will say that if you move forward with this ordinance, it incorporates by reference the definition from the previous ordinance. So if we come back to the council with, you know, an opportunity to discuss a potential change, we'll just make a change to one code section.
We won't have to do both of them. Okay. I had a, I was thinking about it, and I came up with an analogy that kind of clarifies my position a little better into what my problem is. And it's, it's as if a pharmacy was open in Rockland, and they wanted to deliver cannabis products to Loomis. And we, essentially, the way that I'm reading that what we currently have stated is that we are not allowing them to deliver anything to Loomis. And so this pharmacy, if, if you wanted to order aspirin from the pharmacy, because they also deliver cannabis to other peo, to other jurisdictions, we are saying in our, it seems like we're saying in our ordinance that they can't deliver anything. And I think that's not acceptable. And so we should, we, I'm okay with, I'm completely for the, the, the removal of allowing them to deliver, uh, you know, the, the syringes, but I think the other services that we really should allow. So that's kind of clarifies my position. If that's, if I'm misinterpreting that, if that doesn't apply, then I apologize, but...
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure if that helps me understand. What I understood the concern was, is that the same programs that provide syringe services also provide other services? And you were concerned about...
The other services.
A prohibition on other services.
Correct. So that was essentially what I was saying, with they were, if they were, if it was a pharmacy that was deli, that was also deli, that was delivering cannabis, but also other things, there is other delivery products.
Right, right.
Okay, all right. And that's essentially my...
I, I get it.
Okay, got it. I just wanted to clarify. Um, but that's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody else on the council have any questions? Okay, then forgive me if I'm mistaken, we can move on to the next form of business.
Uh, we need a motion and, and approval.
And Jeff, this is a, a motion to, of the modification, correct?
This is, this is a motion to conduct first reading...
Oh, okay.
On the revised, um, ordinance, as Christie has explained. For, ordinances require what's called two readings. Without getting too much into the minutia, in the old days, you would literally read the entire ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So when you look at the recommended action, and it says, "Wave first reading, read by title only," what that means is you're not going to make someone actually literally read the entire ordinance. You're just reading the title of the ordinance. Um, but, and you're doing a first reading, which is your public hearing in this case, and then the second reading...
Which is next time.
Which is next time.
Yeah.
And that would be presumably adoption...
Okay.
At that point.
So we're just moving it until the next meeting?
Well, you are, my, this is one of those ones where my suggestion would be move the recommended action...
Okay.
Because the recommended action is structured to address all the things that need to be done. The only change is you're moving the recommended action with the modification that was just, that was presented to you this evening.
You want a motion for that?
Then I, I so move with the modification.
Okay.
One second. Oh, I did it.
You did.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
So since we passed that, now we can move on to item 10, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so item 10, um, this is an exciting one. Um, this was in the, the CIP that we adopted, shade sales, uh, Blue Anchor Park. We approved it with a conceptual, uh, $75,000 to, to get through the design, um, and, and we're bringing that forward tonight. So, um, I'm going to introduce Dylan Butterbaugh. He's, uh, with Aon Landscaping. He's, he designed our, our Sunrise Loomis Park. He helped the Hunter Oaks subdivision with their landscape and rockery wall project, and, and now he's helping us with the shade sales. So, um, he's going to step us through a, a PowerPoint, kind of showing some design concepts, and, and this is truly intended to be interactive. So, um, we'll, we'll kind of share with you, uh, some thoughts, and then we'll take feedback, and, and then we can bring that back for, um, review at the next meeting for, for final design. So, Dylan, thank you.
Hello, council and members of the public that are here tonight. Thank you for your time. I'm just going to get right into it. So we're going to be sharing an update on the possible shade improvements at the Loomis Depot. As you recall, in 2011, that's when the actual historic improvements to the depot took place and Blue Anchor Park, and that created a really vibrant, vibrant community amenity, and it still is. But the town has been hearing from the community that there is a distinct lack of shade, because the trees after 12 years are still not gr, tall enough to provide any shade. It'll probably be at least another 10, possibly 15, 20 years before you're really seeing the shade that those trees can provide. So one option is to install shade structures immediately, and that would provide shade now and give users of the space a more comfortable use. So in choosing, next slide, please, in choosing which type of shade structure to include in this location, we had a few criteria. So one was that the shade structure needs to not compete or detract from the historic character of the depot. It also needs to be flexible in the amount of shade that it can provide and the amount of user groups at various locations and various times of day, and also something that is affordable both in installation and maintenance. So after reviewing that criteria and weighing it, because it's a complex site, we determined that shade sales could provide the optimal mix of aesthetics, shade, um, functionality, and long-term maintenance. And after a variety of iterations, we came to this plan. So next slide. So overall, providing shade for the Blue Anchor Park shade structure, and then a symmetrical layout in front of the depot that would not detract from view, so you can still see in from the street, and also provide several different shading options to expand the use in the plaza. Uh, the materiality would match the materials of the depot, so the trim color would be the post color, and then the shade fabric, as proposed, would be tan. So it's not like a drastic change in color from what's currently there now. And also, it would be the least contributing to heat island effect, because it's a light-colored material. So next slide. So starting with the Blue Anchor Park, that play equipment is locomotive-themed, so it actually does have a little curved shade panel, if you can call it that. It doesn't really provide any shade, but it does contribute to the theme, so we didn't want to mess with that. And it's about eight to 10 feet tall. And then directly adjacent to that, there's also the existing metal gable roof shade structure and picnic area. So that's why shade sales made sense there. You don't want to put a second big, massive, hard roof shade structure there. So what we came up with was connected three-point sales, if you go to the next slide. And it would just kind of sit over the top and provide shade during the hottest parts of the day if children wanted to use it then. Moving over to the depot. So here is where the existing plaza has the turnaround, and then it's got the two main plaza areas. And this is where we don't want to detract too much from the main building, so there's no shade proposed directly in front, but the two areas to the sides would receive shade and then the materials would match. So going to the next one. So the first area is plaza area by the splash pad where there's currently bistro tables with umbrellas. So that's good now. Whenever I've been out at the site, there's tons of people using those tables and they're hanging out there, but we think it could be better. So for instance, if kids are hanging out at the splash pad during a hot summer day, they can run over for some repeve under the shade sails, or if they're hanging out on the lawn. And then with the added shade, there could, or go back just a second, there could be, yeah, there could just be a, possibly a more abundant or flexible layout with the tables, so different group sizes. So moving over adjacent to the turnaround area, the next slide. So here, there's just various precast concrete benches that aren't shaded at all at the moment. So during the heat of the day, nobody would use them. So what we're coming in with is some single posts, cantilever shades that would just provide shade to those benches, and then also depending on the angle of the sun at the later in the day, a little bit of shade in those small plaza areas. And that would be the same on the other side because it's a symmetrical layout. And then the final shade sale would be on the north side of the depot, adjacent to the bus stop. So that would be another connected three and four-point shade sale that, right now, it's some tables out next to trees that are maybe that tall at the moment. And some benches, there'd be the opportunity for possibly adding more bistro tables or something and just more flexibility. So overall, provide shade and comfort that could activate the space more than it even is now. And I know it's well-used now, but it could be even better, especially in the summer. And the preliminary estimate from USA Shade, which is one manufacturer, and they're kind of like the high end in the market, is with contingency, possibly around four hundred fifty thousand, if you want to go to the next slide. Or I guess four hundred and thirty-five thousand. There are other manufacturers that come in cheaper than that, so that could be a point of discussion. But with that, that's all I have, and I would welcome questions and comments. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions first before we ask the public? You do, okay.
So I, I do want to point out, you know, this is, there's, we gave you multiple locations where you could put shade or not put shade. So there, I mean, this is not a all or none. It's, I mean, council could direct staff to look at doing sections of it for now, maybe design all of it, phase it in, the rest of it. So we're looking for direction from council, how you would like us to proceed. The monies is there in the parks fund, and there, if council wanted to dedicate monies to this project to do it holistically, the whole project, or if you wanted to piecemeal it.
Right.
Fully at your discretion.
And I just wanted to make a comment that this was put on the, the CIP from past council who have heard from many community members about having the shade over there to, for their kids while they're watching them at the, at the splash park. So just, it's not a, it's just not out of the thin air. It's been talked about. And that's all I have, that comment right now until I hear your question.
So I had a couple of questions about the durability of the fabric. If we go with a cheaper option, I'm assuming that means less durable. Also, how long do they last? So go, we'll start with that.
Yeah, so in terms of lasting, I mean, depending on the company and their warranty, it's ten to thirty years. So I would say in general, it's fifteen to twenty years with possibly some maintenance. The fabric is usually from one or two different suppliers, so we could potentially still get the good fabric. And that's actually not the expense. The expense is the footings. So the way the cheaper companies save cost is they have smaller footings. USA Shade's got these big, humongous ones.
And does that, is, does any of the shade structures interfere with the proposed structures? Do they interfere with any of the trees that are currently growing? Are we going to have, are we going to be shading trees?
All the existing trees are going to remain where they are and eventually grow up and complement the shades.
Through, through the shades, so they're not directly under the shade?
Yeah, it would be lined up as they grow, is what we have to do. But yeah, it's not, it's not possible.
And then, and one of my other questions was on the, uh, the picture of the play structure with the shade on top of it. That picture makes it look like the shade is right on top of the, like, I could climb up there. But I was told that they have to be eight feet above.
Eight feet above the deck, technically. So if, I mean, if we did eight feet above the highest shade?
It would be really high.
Then you'd be like twenty, twenty-five feet up. We might as well not do it because it's going to be shading the adjacent grass.
So they really are that close? I mean, if.
Yeah, I mean, they're, so they're up about four, five feet above is what we're proposing. It might be a little hard to tell in that, from the perspective.
That's dicey. I, I know, my kids would never do that, but I know of kids that would climb up on top of there and just climb on top of the sale if they could. I mean, I, I've seen kids get on top of those, what's existing now, and so it's, if, if all they have to do is, if, all they have to do is four feet of.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a good. Yeah, it's good feedback.
Okay. Is there a way to design around that? To get it up a little higher, where it'd still keep the shade?
Oh, yeah, you can always go bigger. It's just.
Not, it's just pricey.
So there was one option where you can kind of retrofit and then add shade integrated into the structure, but it's going to take away from the curve, train effect, but I guess it, it'd be a matter of priority. So that's an option, which would be less overarching and, but it would be changing the structure.
Right.
And so the really, the only way to get around it would be possibly plant more trees, but you're going to have to wait for the timeframe of the trees or a bigger structure that's spanning the tops. We had also looked at a pyramid-type shade structure that's bigger and square, but next to the other one, it's just going to look kind of.
It looks weird.
Tacky, so.
Okay. And then.
So David, before you move on, I just wanted to cover, you talked about durability. In my past life in Colfax, we had put some of these shade structures up over the playground and, and over the bleachers sections, and, and they've been up for almost six years and they've weathered all that snow and everything else up there, and they're holding up perfectly fine. Same type of cannabis, canvas material on the top as well, too. It's a good product.
And we had also talked about during our meeting about how they are not waterproof. And so you're not going to be, you shouldn't be having anybody trying to live under these things because they're not, they're not going to, only provide shade.
Yeah. And, and also it gives an opportunity for the heat to release through it as well, too. It doesn't capture it. But yes, it does have that other added benefit.
And I, just for the council, the, the price was a lot more than I was expecting, so I would kind of, I would really like to hear your opinions on, on this.
You've got a question? Go ahead.
Wes, I've got a question for you, since you have experience with this product up in Colfax. Over time, UV tends to degrade any material, or most materials, especially a fabric, even if it has a UV retardant impregnated into the dye or the actual fiber. So how have you, and, and so let me back up for a second. Sometimes what will happen is you'll see a fabric that is pulled taut by some cable or other tethering system, but because of the degradation from UV, you'll see it start to sag, and so it loses its tension. And then the wind will come by and creates a whip, and then over time, that repetitive back and forth will create a tear, and then the tear is now, you know, a large rip and you get a big, like an avulsion, to use a medical term. But how have you seen, one of the first signs of UV degradation is the loss of pigment in, in the fabric. How are yours, not yours, but the Colfax ones, faring after six years?
And so they're, they're holding up well because we're using the, kind of the same, they use the same sand kind of color, the, the lighter fabric color that, the, the UV doesn't deteriorate the color in it. And I've even seen, seen that one up there where there was snow piled on it. And then when it melted off, it still had its.
Tension.
Tension and stuff in there. It's, there's a cable that goes around the base of it to get it nice and taut in there. And there is a warranty on that fabric. If it, if it does tear prematurely or something else, that they, they replace the, the product, but just chance, full transparency, we would still have to probably have it paid to be put it in, on there for somebody to come in and do it.
And so after six years, you're, you're seeing good results, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one. Do you have a question? Are you sure?
Okay. I just wanted to, you had said that it covers servicing, is that correct? Or is that, is that an addition? Like, you said that there is warranty, so does that include, like, them coming out and servicing them if there is somewhat of a?
That I do not know at this time. I believe that it's what Wes mentioned, where the warranty is just, they'll provide you with a new materials if it fails. I don't know if they actually do the actual installation.
I, I also just wanted to make another statement, that if you remember back during COVID, that's when the tables and chairs and umbrellas came out. We, we did that so that people could grab their meals and sit out and outside, and it's continued. And I think that it's a, a very, um, it, it makes it very nice for our businesses to do, to go meals and have them come down and, you know, I've seen with ice creams and I see them with LBB food and all of that. And so just adding a little bit more, I think will enhance our park. I, I, I agree with you, David, it's a lot, and so I'm not sure if we should do all of them all at the same time. I'm just trying, especially since I don't know, I'd like to see our budget before we, we do that. But I'm not against it. I think more is better. I mean, as far as if we could do it out of the park fund, I just need to be assured that that's something that we can do without taking from another project. But absolutely right here is where I think we would, should start, so that people can come from the restaurants and eat.
Make a comment before, I'm sorry, Wes. So if I'm understanding correctly, you said it's, we have that in that fund, we wouldn't be taking it from somewhere else, correct?
From the budget that was adopted from the previous manager that came before you, there is a one point one million dollars in the park fund that is collected from mitigation fees from development that's sitting there that could be utilized for this type of a project because it's not maintenance-related, it is enhancing the overall park and benefit for the new impacts from the, the new people in the area, if you will. And while at the same time adding additional opportunity for the existing residents prior to.
So my, I, I was thinking, to me, this is like a multifunctional thing, right? Because it is, yes, we want our kids to go out there and be able to play without getting burned on the play structures, and we want our families to be able to sit out there and whatever, but think about all of the functions that we have out here and all of the different, like, in the summertime, all the parks, all this stuff. So I'm just thinking, like, it would, it would really pay for itself, and I think that, you know, we've had to have pop-out, pop-ups come out there and different things. I just think it would be so beneficial. And I mean, we could piecemeal it, but I don't know, I just feel like we should just get it done. I mean, that's my personal, I just, I think it's, I think it would be great. I think it looks, it would look fantastic. It would actually add a lot aesthetically. I think it would just really look sharp out there.
I'm with you. I just wanted to say, you know, I just wanted to be sure that it was coming out of, of funds that we already had and not going to take from something else. But I've heard it over and over and over again, even before I was on council, that it, there's just not a shade out there.
Well, I've gone out there with my kids and my grandkids, my husband and I, in the summertime, and it's, if you can't grab a table, like, you're, you know what I mean, you're subject, or if you're, and even the covered parking, or covered seating in the little, you know, wherever the benches are, it gets kind of, like, it traps heat in there. It's not necessarily breathable, right? And so, and, and it's not as close to the splash pad, so if you're way over there trying to get, and you're trying to watch your kids or whatever, so I just, yeah, I, I've experienced it myself. I think it's, I think it would be fantastic.
So Madam Mayor, I just want to point out, I, I really want to thank Merrill for jumping right on this, and it was an item that we, it was brought up by council and stuff, and he, he got right on top of it and kind of did, brought on the consultant to kind of look at this for you and stuff, so I think, thanks. My hat's off to you, Merrill. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And I, we, we can take comments and put that into a final concept. I, I don't know if that's final design, but at least final concept to make sure we're on the right page, and then we can present that again early next year.
Are we in agreement to let them do what they got to do at this point and then come back later, maybe the next meeting with what we found?
Giving them the direction?
Well, believe.
Oh, public comment first? Anybody in the audience have public? Okay, a lot of you. Okay, let's do that.
Hi, Deb, hi, council. Thank you, Deborah Grinder. I live over here in Loomis. I agree with Amanda that if you start piecemealing it, it's going to be, this section is going to get aged, and then you're going to put another new section. It's not going to look right. I think if you're going to do it, might as well just do the whole thing, all at once. I think it would look better. Yeah. And if there's the money, yeah. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
I love it when you guys agree with me.
Good evening. I was wondering why we haven't talked about putting in fully mature trees in the spots that we need shade for four hundred thousand dollars. You could get fully mature trees that have shade, and they'll come out and they'll plant them. This thing for four hundred thousand dollars is, I know we have the money, that don't mean we have to spend it. I think the councils should look into full-grown trees that we don't have to wait like thirteen years for them to grow in order to get shade. There's trees out there that will offer shade immediately once they're planted in the ground. Thank you.
I, I just had a question I wanted to ask Wes here, since he has the experience with the, with the material. Did you find in the, in the six years that you had to do annual maintenance on it as far as the bird droppings on it and cleaning the top and, and all that on an annual basis?
No, there, there was almost maintenance-free. I mean, the elevation of where the, the material is at, you really don't see the top of it, and the rain actually does a great job of knocking off the bird feces and also dust because you'd be amazed at what dust gathers on top of material. And having the sand finish material also kind of hides that better as well, too. It was absolutely maintenance-free. Now, usually when they put in the, the post, they give you paint, the spray paint on there because when you get graffiti, sometimes you can't get it off. They'll give you match paint that you can put on there. That's usually typically the maintenance that you see on these things.
Yeah, the other thing that I, I was curious about is that, if I remember correctly, when, when they approved the, the project for the Sunrise Park, that we talked about the, the budget and it sounded like we, we, you know, we just had just enough to do it with the, with the, with the, the budgeting. And you're saying that now there's over a million dollars in the, in the park fund and.
So Merrill can answer that for you?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, so there's, there's a fund balance, which the Park Development Fund balance has a million dollars that's accumulated that's, that's not spoken for. It, it's unencumbered, it hasn't been allocated to any projects, and that's, that's what Wes is referring to, a million dollars. Then there's separate from that, there's the, the capital budget where we carve out individual projects, and then those projects are funded from the various funds. And, and so for Sunrise Loomis Park, we had a, a budget for that project that was taken out of the Park Development Fund. And, and that was, depending on what we were trying to do, that was the one, I think we went back for an amendment, to, to create a little more capacity. Where, where from this, this, this bucket, this park development bucket, we, we transferred enough money to finish the park the way we wanted to finish it. But, but the million dollars is, is unspoken for, it's available for new projects, it's, it's, it's available.
Thank you.
And Merrill, the Sunrise Park, that also used Prop sixty-eight funding as well, too, for it, didn't it?
Absolutely. Big chunk of it, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, I think, was all grant-funded.
Hi, everyone. Sandy, Placer County. Just, I was just curious about the trees, too. Just wondering if you guys have identified the type of trees that are existing right now and, and questioning why they're not growing after twelve years? That's kind of a long time. Is there something wrong with the soil? Or again, is it the variety of the trees? The other thing, too, is considering the variety of trees if you wanted to plant other trees that tend to grow faster. I know there used to be a program with one of the utility companies that helped you identify trees that would provide shade and they would help you with the cost as residents. I don't remember if it was Rose, City of Roseville, or I can't remember which utility it was. But anyways, that's just. or I can't remember which utility it was. But anyways, that's just something to consider. And you know, of course, remembering that trees, you know, they, they help the environment and they make things cooler. I don't know if this type of material is going to increase heat. I know that it's not covering so much. There's perforations so that there's release of heat from underneath, but is it, you know, is it going to absorb heat? The other thing, just a question, is the consideration of the color of the fabric. Is there a color that provides more shade, protective shade for the users of the, of the equipment versus a lighter color that might allow, you know, the light to go through and the heat to go through more easily? I, I don't know. I don't know about that, but just something to consider, so. And I think it's a great addition. It's going to bring more community together, you know, and find, and make it more enjoyable for everyone. So that's, that's great. Thank you.
So on the, you know, the being able to protect for the UVs and stuff, I, I equate it to just like your sweater. No matter whether it's blue, black, red, it's still going to have that same mesh to it, right? So all of the various colors have the same mesh to it, the same gaps, if you will, in there. So it's, it's equally the, the same amount of shading. It doesn't matter what the color is. Yeah, the tan color will actually offset some of the, the heat emitting off. And then, you know, shade the, the concrete, which adds a lot of heat as well, too, more than I think the fabric would.
So the lighter color fabrics have the highest reflectivity. So they're still slightly coarse, but they, I think it's like 92% reflectivity, but all of the fabrics, depending where you get it from, are between 80 and 85% shade coverage. And that's their measure of how much gets through the actual fabric.
I can add on the trees. We do, one of our consultants is an on-call arborist that helped us when we were doing the tree pruning, just to make sure they were being pruned per standards. And we can reach out to our arborist and maybe do an assessment with the trees and see if, if, if it's a soil condition. Is it the species? But, but we can bring that back at the next meeting as well. And I'll work with Dylan in terms of identifying. Maybe as an alternative, the cost of, of what would it take to prep the site and bring in a huge tree is, is an option, so.
So if there's no other public comment, then can we move to Zoom? Oh, yeah. Pam, and it looked Miguel at one point was, right? He, I guess lowered his hand. There he goes.
Hi, I guess you can hear me? Hello? Okay, thank you. Miguel Uchubish, 5911 Craigport, Loomis, California. I guess just for a little bit of background, I've been in the parks and recreation business. I was there for 40 years. First, I'd like to clarify this pool of money. What was stated is it's not exactly a pool of money to do whatever you want with it. It's collected when new houses are built. There's three fees that are collected. One is for land acquisition, one is for park development, and one is for open space. And the money is supposed to be spent in that, those particular areas. Apparently Loomis has taken the land acquisition, the park development, the open space monies and put them all into one fund. And I don't think you can do that. You can't say that you have a million dollars. It's land acquisition, part of the money is supposed to be spent by land. The other part is supposed to be developed. So you could use the development fees for this particular project. Secondly, on the project, I was down there four or five times with my great grandson this summer. I don't think you need to put a shade structure over the playground equipment. We were down there like between two and four and he had no problem or, or, or did any of the other kids playing on that playground equipment. The way it's, what it's made out of and the way it covers are on it, it doesn't get extremely hot. So I don't think you'd have to put that kind of a structure there. The other one where you do need some kind of shade is on those concrete benches that are in front of the spray pad. I could see a shade structure being there. The other ones are the picnic bench, I'm, I'm sorry, the round tables with the umbrellas in them. And those work pretty well. I wish we could get more of them in there. And that might be someone to look at is could you redesign that area to get more tables in there? But I don't see putting another shade structure over the top of that. So I think to spend $450,000 to put in some shade structures, which most of them I don't think are really necessary. And so those are my comments. Thanks.
Hi there. Dylan did a really nice, you know, presentation. So my big question is, is this going out to bid where you take the lowest bid, then you get that cheap fa- fabric that's going to only last a few years? Wes, can you answer that question right now before I go to my next one?
Not to, you're welcome to respond, Merrill.
Oh, Merrill, sorry.
Yeah, Pam, we're, this is concept level tonight. We're just trying to gather ideas
Oh, okay.
and, and support. And, and the next step would be to, to put together kind of a final design. And then you're right, it would go out to bid. There'd be specifications that, that speak to the, the quality and the nature of the product that's acceptable. You know, and obviously that comes at a cost depending on what's called out. But, but this stage is, is just concept level right now.
Okay. Well, that, that's good to know. I'd like to have it explored more with bigger trees being planted. I mean, that's just going to get better, better and better than the shade structures. So yeah, I think that's basically it. I've been down there multiple times. I've seen the, the trees. And if they've been there that long, maybe we planted the wrong trees or maybe they're not getting enough water. I don't know. But if we're at this stage where it's possibly going to go to like a bid like the spray pad went to where you took the lowest bid and we've had multiple problems with the spray pad. So I'm glad we're going to look into this a little bit more. Thank you. Oh, Gloria, no, raise hand.
Oh, Ken Jean. Okay, go ahead, Jean.
Yeah. Jean Wilson, since Miguel brought it up, I, I'm curious as to the source of the funding. Is this only the park developing, developing things or does it include land acquisition and, and the open space funds? In other words, are we not using the land acquisition and open space funds for this project? Or are we not using those things that, are we spending all that money and not planning to do any any acquisition as collected the fees for?
So I'll read from the adopted budget. If you go to the, the page that has to do with the park development, there's a description of what the, the park fund says. It says during the 19, 2019, 20, the town contracted for an update of developer impact fees. The contractor recommended only one development fee and the park acquisition and passive park open space fees were discontinued. This one fee is now collected to buy property and develop park facilities. So it sounds like all those three funds that used to exist have been consolidated into one. And the eligibility of what you spend those funds are, it goes back to what those three funds supported, but it's at the council's discretion in terms of how they want to spend that money. It's the way I read it.
Okay, go. Oh, if, if there's no other public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Oh, Miguel. Okay. Okay, okay. All right. So then we can bring it back to council. Would you like to?
When Wes posed the question earlier about doing it piecemeal or in sections, I think that's a more appropriate term or a more holistic approach. And after hearing Ms. Griner's comments, I am leaning heavily toward a more holistic approach simply because the nature of the construction industry, even as of today, is such that we do have supply issues, supply delivery, supply line issues. And so for instance, if you were to choose to do it sections at a time, we talked about the fabric earlier. It could be that because we space it out that we get a different die lot and so they don't, they don't match. Or some of the steel components, the supplier for that may have an interruption of some sort. So we have to go to a different source and then they're not shaped the same way. And so I just, when it comes to these types of projects, it's better to do it all in one fell swoop with one contract and, and the suppliers that you have. And that way it's consistent. And it won't look hodgepodge and mismatched. You, you you mitigate that possibility by doing it that way. So that was my two cents.
Anybody else have any comments? Jenny, David?
I just, I, I'm trying to think back and I don't think anything's been improved in this park other than the, the tables and chairs and umbrellas since the 2011. But I might be wrong. I, I just don't think anything has, so just a statement.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to do, if you, we could address a couple of those things. So the, the, we'll start with the, the fund that you were talking about, Merrill. Does it say, if, if, the way I heard it was that the fees were changed in 2020, not that the fund was changed in 2020. Can you read that again? I mean, or just read through it so that explain it to me a little bit?
Let's, why don't we, at a staff level, we'll go back and look at this. And when we come back to council at the next meeting, we'll make sure that
Okay, make sure that we really talk to money.
Yeah, what the constraints are, what the different, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I'm assuming that you have, but have you looked at grants for this kind of thing? Are there any grants available for us?
Uh, we can look into it. I'm, I'm not aware of any at this time.
Okay. But I mean, anytime we can get free money.
Yeah.
We should all get free money. Yeah, okay. And then there's the tree program that, that Rose, she was talking about. Is there, do you have any idea what she was talking about? Who was it?
Deborah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or Sandy. Okay.
And is it, is it possible, I've never heard of them moving full trees before. Is that, you can do that? And they, they root and everything? That's so weird. I've never, they're so huge. How could you possibly do that?
Yeah, you can get farm grown trees, full size. I mean, it's hefty.
Full sized trees.
It's a good comment. So we're definitely going to take it back to the drawing board and see what our options are.
Is it, is it $100,000? Is it the same price as a change?
All of those things are expensive.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just.
Heavy equipment rentals are not cheap.
I, I would appreciate just looking into it. I mean, if it's, if it's, if we're saving a ton of money, then that's great. Yeah, 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 yeah. And then, so one of the things that Pam brought up at the beginning of the meeting was the splash pad. You know, the fact that it's kind of not functional right now is that we, I, we can't throw that all into one big go because it, but is there, can you just address that real quick?
So the splash pad was kind of put on pause. Two reasons. One, just lower priority in terms of everything else we were trying to do. But then the cost of the water that's leaking out relative to the cost of, of trying to break that apart and repair it. It just seemed like.
Do you have an idea of how much water is?
Well, the, the thought was maybe in time that the splash pad might be re-envisioned in, into something more grandiose. And that might be the opportunity to, to go in and repair and rebuild and, and create a new space.
And the shades that we're putting in don't inhibit that in any way?
I think they're on the perimeter, so they should be fine.
Okay. And I, I actually would like if we, I mean, you had talked about it, mentioned, we'd get the arborists to come out and
Yeah.
If they're stuck at that height forever, then there's no.
Yeah, my, my, my thinking is it's a soil issue. But, but if you dig a big enough hole, right, and add amendments, that, that might address it. So we'll look into it.
Okay. And then I have a question for, kind of for Jenny, about the, so on the, show everybody. So you're talking about the businesses come, is with this, this side over here, does that, do we need that, that sale? I mean, would that, do we have enough people coming from our businesses that would actually get, employ all of this space? Are they asking for all of that?
I believe so, yes.
And then if you're thinking in terms of not only just that, but David, like the eggplant festival or the summer concerts that we have out there and how much more community it would bring if people felt like they wouldn't be outside baking like that. So I just think that it would be so functional. I think it would, it would bring a lot to our community events.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, it was a lot more than I was expecting. And I mean, I've heard complaints about the splash pad. I've heard complaints about the, the play structure. I've I, I understand the business. I hadn't heard anybody from the businesses complaining about it, but I'm glad that you brought it up, Jen. It's just, I, I they're not, they're just thinking, it's a, yeah, okay. I'm just, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And if we can, I would like to see, so if we can do trees, that would be better. If we can get, if we can get the same amount of shade for a much, for a lower cost with trees, that's, I think that's, that's an ideal solution. And we'd like to look into the fund, but also the, the one with the the train structure with the, the sales so low is really that's just, I think that's a safety issue. And I would actually like to, if we could just, just take a second look at that and see if there's anything else. That's all I have.
We're good? Okay. So at this time, I think we need to let staff, take it back to staff, let them do their thing. And then next month, we'll hear more from you guys on how we're going to go forward with this. That's what I'm, yeah, under the red, because we got the questions and then it says send back to staff.
Yeah, I think we have clear direction here. There's a few items we need to bring back. It's part of the discussion in there. And then kind of the final concept and Merrill will work with the consultant to kind of get that moving along. And then we can determine the fees and whether it's applicable or not. And then council can give us final direction at that point.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So then with that being said, I think we'll go to the council member reports if there are any. So let's start this way. Let's start this way and go down. So Amanda, do you have any reports?
I have one quick one. So I've been able to fill in for Danny as his alternate for PCTPA. And in that process, well, right now we're, we're coming up with some different solutions. But when we started talking about the horseshoe bar and AD interchange, I have been able to be able to question them about some of the money, some funds that might be available for that interchange. So that looks like it might be really promising. And then the, like he was talking about earlier, the shop money, hopefully that would be, I'm getting from, from Caltrans, which would all, all kind of goes together from the same kind of meeting that we had. But it was very interesting meeting that I was able to ask some questions. And I feel like we're on a really good track to get some, some answers and to look for for funding for our project. So where the gentleman left already, but that was already on our, on our thoughts. So I'm actually, it was very great timing that he was here to complain about that very same thing today.
Oh, yes. You said now or you have some?
I have nothing to report. I have nothing to report.
Uh, most of my committees have been off because of the holidays, but we just, yesterday we celebrated Ken Graham from the Public Works at the Placer County is retiring, and so anybody who knows him knows that he's retiring, and so he's, he's a great guy, and we'll, we'll miss him, and so he's got some big shoes to put. That's it.
Jenny?
We want to bring up the point on there that the county homeless task force is no longer-
Oh, that's a good one. You should bring that up.
I had mentioned at a previous meeting that the countywide homelessness task force has been, I'm gonna say it's been dissolved, the, the task force, the elect, the elected officials are no longer meeting. It's now moved to more of just a, not a policy, but a, action. So they, they don't need, they've got all the direction they essentially need, and now it's just a bunch of staff-level stuff. And so, the public is still invited to go, elected officials are part of the public that we can go to, but we just don't, there's not gonna be any votes taken anymore. And so, that, and I, I talked about this in September-
I think so, yeah.
-about how it's shutting down, and so that should, that, that committee is, no, no longer needs to be filled in the future.
Sorry, David.
It's, it's very sad, yeah.
Yes. Jenny?
Nothing really, I did get an email saying that I was appointed to the Community Service Committee for the League of California Cities, and I believe that you guys were also appointed to-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't think about talking about that.
Well, kind of a big deal.
Yeah, yeah, I was appointed to the Transportation Committee for the League of Cities also, so. So that actually will be great, because I'll hopefully be staying on PCTPA, so I will be up to speed on all things transportational here pretty soon.
And I was appointed to public safety. So there you go. Right on. Congratulations to both of you, by the way. Okay, so I guess we're good. At this point, do you have a, a-
A Danny-ism?
A Danny-ism.
Oh, I do. This is real fast. My parents grew up in Tennessee, they're proper Southerners, if you will. And when my dad was a boy, 10, 11 years old, he'd get on the railroad tracks and walk a few miles into town along the railroad tracks, go to a country store whenever he had a few coins to spend, and he'd go to the, the proprietor, whatever the, the guy's name was, and he'd say, "May I have," this is, this is southern vernacular here, he says, "May I have an RAC, a moon pie, and some after-sipping, dipping, and flipping snuff?" Chew on that a little while.
All right, so on that note, I'm not gonna say friends be kind, that's what Danny's saying, he can still say that on his, I think we should call it Danny-meanderings or Danny-isms, whatever we wanna call that. I'm going to adjourn. Be, be excellent, be safe, stay classy, Loomis, happy holidays, and, like you said earlier, stay safe. And, yeah, I'm journeying.
Good job.
Thank you. Hopefully next month will be better.